I'll call to order the May 9th meeting of the Minneapolis City Planning Commission. My name is Matt Brown, I serve as President of the Commission. I am joined today by Commissioners Slack, Sweetsie, Lukey Pierre, Vreeland, and Rockwell. Our first item of business today is to approve the actions from the April 25th meeting. They have a motion to approve those actions. We have a motion and a second to call in favor. And that motion carries. Our next item of business is to organize the agenda. We'll determine which items will be on the consent agenda and which items will be discussed. There are hard copies of the agenda available in the hallway. So, starting at the top, first we have Item 1, 3219 Portland Avenue. That's a rezoning. We will discuss that item. Item 2 is the Elin Uptown Center and West, at 2828 Dupont Avenue South, 2812 Emerson Avenue South, and 2828 Emerson Avenue South. That's a conditional use permit. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on that item? Seeing no one, we'll put that on consent. Item 3 is 3535 Grand, 3535 through 3543 Grand Avenue South. That's a Site Plan Review Amendment. We'll discuss that item. And Item 4 is the Withdrawal Management Expansion and New Mental Health Crisis Stabilization Center at 1800 Chicago Avenue. That's a conditional use permit. Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition to or modify the staff recommendation on that item? Seeing no one, we'll put that on consent. So, our agenda as amended is Items 2 and 4 will be on consent, and Items 1 and 3 will be discussed. They have a motion to approve the agenda as amended. We have a motion and a second, all in favor. And that motion carries. Next, we'll consider our Committee of the Hall consent agenda from April 28th. And Vice President Slack, do you have an update from that meeting?
Thank you, President Brown. We had one item that we heard at the Committee of the Hall, and that was a land sale for 4311 Gerard Avenue North, Green Homes North. And the recommended motion out of that meeting was to approve staff report that the item was consistent with Minneapolis' plan for sustainable growth.
All right, and I'll take that as a motion to find that that land sale is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second, all in favor. And that motion carries. Next, we'll move on to the public hearing portion of our meeting. And, oh, excuse me, at this time, we should consider the consent agenda first. At this time, I'll open the public hearing for the consent agenda. That is Items 2 and 4. Is there anyone wishing to speak on Items 2 or 4? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing, and they have a motion to approve the consent agenda. We have a motion and a second, all in favor. And that motion carries. Next, we'll move on to our items for discussion. We'll begin with Item 1, rezoning at 3219 Portland Avenue, and staff is Ms. Smith.
Good afternoon, President Brown and Commissioners. Victoria Yepes has submitted a land use application to rezone the property located at 3219 Portland Avenue, from the R2B2 family district to the R3 multiple family district. And this would allow the addition of a third dwelling unit on the property, which currently contains a duplex, and it's two and a half stories, constructed originally in 1896. As you can see, the site is located mid-block on Portland Avenue. It's about two and a half blocks south of Wake Street, which is a designated commercial corridor. All but seven of the 77 properties analyzed within a 350-foot radius of the property contain single-family homes or duplexes, and those are all allowed within the R2B district. Of the seven properties that don't contain single-family homes or duplexes, five contain legally non-conforming properties containing three dwelling units or more, and two parcels are vacant. Here is the zoning map showing the subject's site and the surrounding area. As you can see, it's consistently zoned R2B. So, the applicant is proposing to add a third dwelling unit, and that would be located on the third floor of the existing building. There would be no exterior modifications. The site would contain three parking spots for the residents, and this is in compliance with the minimum parking requirement. The land use applications that are required are rezoning from R2B to R3, and then a variance for the minimum lot area. So, in the R3 district, the minimum lot area is 5,000 square feet or 1,500 square feet per dwelling unit, whichever one is greater. So, in this case, 5,000 square feet would be the minimum lot area required, whereas the subject site is 4,720 square feet. So, I was just going to summarize some of the findings that are required for the rezoning. Staff is recommending denial of both the rezoning and the variance applications. The rezoning finding number one is whether the amendment is consistent with the applicable policies of a comprehensive plan. The future land use guidance for this site is urban neighborhood, and in general, urban neighborhoods are not intended to accommodate a lot of significant new growth, but it's cited as appropriate where it's adjacent to designated nodes, corridors, or other land use features that do support a higher density. The second finding is whether the amendment is in the public interest and not solely for the interests of a single property owner. So, staff has found that the proposed rezoning would not be supported by broader policies that would make it beneficial to the public interest, and it's solely in the interest of this property owner. The third finding is whether existing uses of the property and the general area is compatible with the R3 zoning district. And staff has found that the block and surrounding parcels are zoned R2B, and the proposal would not be compatible with the context, so allowing the medium-density district and the third dwelling unit on this subject site would not be appropriate, given the context study. Fourth is whether there are reasonable uses of the property in question permitted under the existing zoning classification, where the amendment is to change the zoning classification. So, as you saw in the zoning map, everything is zoned R2B, and there are reasonable uses currently on the property, so there is a duplex on the site right now, and that is allowed. Fifth one is whether there has been a change in the character or trend of the area. The site has actually been zoned R2B since the 1963 zoning code was adopted. The R2B district back then is very similar to the R2B district now, which is meant to accommodate low-density residential development, specifically single- and two-family homes. And then, just to go over the variance findings for the minimum lot area, staff finds that it's appropriate to deny the minimum lot area request because it is currently already legally non-conforming to the minimum lot area requirement of 5,000 square feet for the R2B district. So, as I mentioned, it's 4,720 square feet for the subject site, which is legally non-conforming, whereas the average lot area for those surrounding properties is, on average, 5,422 square feet. And the purpose of this ordinance is to allow sufficient lot area for off-street parking, access to light and air, and outdoor amenities for higher-density developments. And just to summarize, there are four letters that have been distributed tonight regarding this application, and these have been received since the printing of the staff report. One is in support of the rezoning, and three are opposed to the rezoning. We have not received any correspondence from the neighborhood group regarding this application. The comments and opposition cite concerns about creating additional parking needs and having a negative impact on the character and quality of life for surrounding properties. And the letter in support states that there are practical reasons for allowing the rezoning, and in addition to citing broader city goals that support additional density throughout the city. Again, staff is recommending denial of the rezoning and variance applications. I'm here to answer any questions, and then I know the applicant is also present to help answer any questions.
Right. Commissioners, are there any questions of staff? Commissioner Rockwell?
Could you tell us what, if this property were rezoned and then torn down, what could be developed there under R3?
In terms of bulk, it would be the same as the R2B district. So, they would be able to have additional density.
Great.
Yep. I'm sorry, bulk is in terms of height, but the FAR is actually 1.0, so actually it would be a larger FAR overall, because it's currently .5 is the maximum.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't know if you mentioned this, but could this be achieved through an accessory dwelling unit?
An accessory dwelling unit is not possible in this case because the property is not owner-occupied, so there would be no owner on site, and that is one of the requirements for the accessory dwelling unit.
Right. Are there any further questions? If there are none, I'll open the public hearing, and I'd like to ask the applicant to speak first. Please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Victoria Yepes, and I am requesting rezoning. I guess our argument is that it's a waste of space. There's a whole empty attic, and it's huge, and our purpose for rezoning would be to help affordable housing, to increase that. The tenants that we're choosing to have live there are of lower income, and it's a huge attic. So, it's kind of like, as opposed to adding it, we were thinking of maybe adding it to the second unit, which might be optional, but then it doesn't house as many people. So, that really was kind of a big deal for us. There is a growing population. You know, it's very accessible for people, especially that don't have cars, because primarily a lot of people don't, you know, the people that we know that would rent that unit don't have cars. So, it's just really close to Metro, I mean, Metro Transit, the greenways close. It's a really just centralized area as far as commute goes for people. And, you know, there's just, there's a lot of single families, smaller families, and having affordable housing in the central, you know, the heart of the city is very, very nice to have. So, yeah. I do understand that it doesn't seem at all like the city doesn't support, and I understand the reasoning behind it. I do see that there is a lot of R2B, but then if you look a block and a half up, there is a lot of other things going on. So, I mean, it's, you know, it's kind of, I was kind of, you know, had questions as far as what they look at when they base it off of that. Is it just the block, or is it two-block radius? Because if you look around, it's all the way up there. There's a whole lot of other zoning going on. So, that was really, I guess that's what I have to say.
All right. Are there any questions of the applicant? Commissioner Lukey Pierre?
Yeah, hi. I was looking at the square footage. It lists the attic unit as having 798 square feet, and I was just wondering what the headroom height of the knee walls were, when you included in the 798. Is that at five-foot high for the knee walls in the attic, since it's sloped, or are you only counting a certain height room?
Okay, so, the total square foot feet of the attic is, it's probably almost, I don't have the plans in front of me, but I believe it's almost like 1,100 square feet. So, we would be excluding the slants, so all the walls would meet the minimum requirement height, which is, I believe, at least six, seven feet. I'm not exactly sure, but they all meet the minimum height requirement. It's a very tall attic, believe it or not. It's, yeah.
Thanks.
Yeah.
All right. Are there any further questions of the applicant? If there are none, is there anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Yes, please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Thank you. My name is Peter Berjourney. I live at 3055 22nd Avenue South, and I'd like to speak in support of the rezoning and the variance and against the staff approval. While the staff approval is the technically-legally correct decision here, I'm hoping that a broader look can be taken at this, or at the very least, impact future policymaking to make this possible. For a three-unit dwelling, this has enough parking. It does not change the physical character of the neighborhood. It provides more affordable housing in this area. It preserves an older building. It seems to be consistent with a lot of city goals, even if they may not be explicitly stated. I also find it kind of amusing that it's denied the variance because it's the applicant's fault that the lot was too small. This building is over 100 years old. I don't think it's their fault that the lot is only 4,700 square feet. So, yeah, I just, even it may not be possible here to make this possible, I'm hoping that in the future, something can be done to make this kind of in-place intensification of density that doesn't disrupt the character, that doesn't add undue parking burden, that does provide affordable housing, make that possible for our city. Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. And Commissioners, we have two applications before us, rezoning and a variance. Would someone like to start us off with a motion, or are there any further questions Commissioner Lukey Pierre?
Sure, I'll get the ball rolling, I guess. I'm going to move to support staff recommendation on the rezoning application, and I'm going to do so not because I don't want them to use the attic, because I actually have a duplex where we finished the attic, but we made it part of the second-floor unit. But I feel as though there are practical ways of using the unit and actually adding affordable housing that actually allows for family. I notice the two, the second-floor unit is a two-bedroom, and a lot of times, it's families that have trouble finding affordable housing. So, to be honest, having an extra square footage for more bedrooms on the third floor would actually be a benefit to families. Here or there, though, the reason why I'm supporting it is because I just can't find a way to justify granting a rezoning in the middle of a sea of R2B. It's not adjacent to anything. It's not on a commercial corridor. It's not on a community corridor. It's in the middle of a block, in the middle of a sea of R2B, and we just have not historically granted what I think some would say is spot zoning. And until the comp plan changes to support that, I just think it's a dangerous precedent to set for upzoning a lot for something like this, when it can be used practically for the same means, at the same end, in the same way. So, I am going to be supporting staff recommendation on that.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Commissioner Bender?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, I kind of can't help taking the opportunity to talk about policy solutions. So, I mean, I agree with Commissioner Lukey Pierre's motion because of the reasons she stated. You know, there is a lot of demand for folks to use existing buildings as higher unit counts as what's allowed in the zoning, and I think it's something we need to take a strong look at in our comp plan update. I think it's notable that, you know, if this were an owner-occupied home, an accessory dwelling unit would be the solution, but because we were not able to get the political support we needed to include rental properties, to have the opportunity to add an accessory dwelling unit, this isn't allowed. So, that would be one policy solution, to allow accessory dwelling units and rental properties. Certainly, you know, looking at our zoning overall in the city, in places, especially in places where there's high demand for housing options, and especially in neighborhoods where there's a lot of larger structures that could be reused for smaller units, you know, there's clearly a demand for that. And I think, again, to Commissioner Lukey Pierre's point, there's a lot of interest in having more units in existing buildings. So, I think the staff's recommendation is the right one, but I also agree with all of the testimony that came forward, and I think it's unfortunate that we are often restrictive of how people are using these older buildings in neighborhoods where a lot of people want to live.
All right. Commissioner Rockwell?
I want to reflect a little bit on what Councilmember Bender said. I agree with everything she said, and I think, and therefore with staff and comments so far. And, you know, I think the, we've caught people in a little bit of a policy bind where a large unit can only be rented by a family and not by a collection of individuals, because we have a limit, a sky on that, a ceiling on that. And yet, we can't allow efficient use of an individual structure, and I think that that's very unfortunate, and I think it's a waste in the city, particularly given the city goals. And so, you know, I agree that this unit could be turned into part of the second story, you know, and then if a family doesn't come forward, then they legally can't rent to a collection of people who could fulfill, who could fill that if it's more than five people, right? Depending on how many rooms there are. So, again, I will support the motion because I believe that it's, that we're caught with our own language here, but just a moment to reflect on the policy.
Right. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Clerk, please call the roll.
Bender?
Aye.
Dagnan?
Aye.
Lukey Pierre?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Slack?
Aye.
Sweetsie?
Aye.
Vreeland?
Aye.
7-0.
And that motion carries. That concludes our discussion on Item 1. Oh, excuse me, that was a motion on the rezoning. We also have a second application, the variance. Would someone like to make a motion on that? Commissioner Lukey Pierre?
I'll make the motion to support staff recommendation on the variance.
Second.
And we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Clerk, please call the roll.
Vreeland?
Aye.
Sweetsie?
Aye.
Slack?
Aye.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Lukey Pierre?
Aye.
Dagnan?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
7-0.
And that motion carries as well. And that does conclude our discussion on Item 1. Our next item for discussion is Item 3, 3535 Grand, and staff is Ms. Sather.
Thank you very much, President Brown, Planning Commissioners. The application before you today is an amendment of a previously approved Site Plan Review application to allow for a new 24-unit multiple-family building in the R5 district. The applicant has proposed to change out the exterior materials that were proposed at the time of approval, and you'll see that the building's material themselves look a little bit different from what was approved previously, but bulk is the same, parking is the same, layout is the same. So, this is the exterior elevations that were reviewed and approved by the City Planning Commission and City Council. And the applicant is before you today with a new proposal, and the reason why it's before you is that staff, or I'm sorry, the Planning Commission and City Council did not grant alternative compliance for the percentage of exterior materials on all four sides. Staff has made the argument that the exterior materials and appearance of the rear and sides are not similar to the front of the building. So, you'll see, the front elevation is at the bottom of the page. That's the west elevation. The applicant is proposing, let's see, brick as the primary exterior material with cement, kind of at the center there and on the corners, and then it wraps the corner, and there is just what you see there in red, just a little bit of proposed brick on the north and south elevations. Majority of the materials on the rear and interior sides is metal, but then you'll see consistently that cement, again, on the corners, and then at the center, at the rear elevation. Here's a rendering of the proposed structure. The percentage breakdown for the exterior materials can be found on Page 4 of the staff report. So, essentially, what they've done with this proposed design is replace the metal that's consistent on the other three elevations with the proposed brick. And staff has recommended that the applicant increase the percentage of brick to make the buildings appear to be more compatible. It's, that's the crux of the argument and the reason why we're having a discussion item today, so I can take any questions.
All right. Are there any questions of staff? Well, if there aren't any at the moment, I can open the public hearing on this item, and I'd like to ask the applicant to speak first. You can state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, members of the Commission. My name is Pete Keely with Collage Architects. When we originally did the proposal, between the proposal and what was approved and the working drawings, there were a few changes, and we were very concerned about price on this going into it. And so, we had proposed doing cement board and metal panel, and since that time, we have found some additional money in the budget. Essentially, there's some very bad soils on the site, and so we found an alternative solution using GeoPierce to actually take some of the cost down. And so, we wanted to come back and put some of that money back into the exterior of the building, and so we felt that the way to do that was to add brick to the front. And so, the traditional pattern of having maybe a different material or a better material towards the front side, or a fine brick versus a common brick on the sides, is actually a fairly, I think, a fairly traditional pattern in the neighborhood, on the street, and so on and so forth. So, we felt that that was kind of actually an upgrade to this, and that the street, the grand, actually has a lot of brick buildings, and we felt brick was probably a better solution than doing another material. So, that's why we came forth with the brick. And so, one of the things on the design of it is that the building was kind of broken into two parts, a left side and a right side, so that the massing, actually with the brick face of that, is really kind of the, taking a 50-foot lot and kind of breaking that down to the setbacks to be about a 35-foot face, which is the, and then the entrance kind of falls between those. So, those are the two brick components, and one of the things that's happening here is that the corners actually separate the materials quite a bit, so the corners have a more, maybe more contemporary look to it, and that's the cement board siding, and then it's metal around the side. So, the sides, which are the two-corner, I guess I need the, you can understand, the sides right in the middle, that would be the same color, and that would be the metal panel. And so, we're using the color, using a little bit of the texture, but essentially, they are different materials. We did look at trying to add some additional brick on the sides and the rear, aside from the cost, which actually kind of was difficult to absorb. It also had a strange striped effect to not do all of it, and so we really didn't have the budget to do all of it. We didn't like the look of doing part of it, so that's why we're here before you today to say we think it's an upgrade. So, I think with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Commissioner Lukey Pierre?
Hi, Pete. What is the, on the front facade between the brick and the metal panel, what is the offset? I can't tell. It reads big on the rendering, but it doesn't look very big on the plan.
Between the, on the sides or in the?
On the wall, the brick wall looks as though it's forward, proud of the building.
It's about 18 inches.
18 inches? And then on the side, is it flush with the cement board siding?
It is relatively flush. It's within about two inches.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Are there any further questions for the applicant? If there are none, is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. And Commissioners, we just have one application before us, the Site Plan Review. Basically, this is a request for additional alternative compliance for the mix of exterior materials. And would anyone like to start us off with a motion, or are there any further questions? Anyone like to start us off? Commissioner Vreeland?
So, we don't have a rendering of the side. It's really hard to look from a horizontal perspective and take the lines.
I can try to zoom in on the proposed elevations. Does that already help? I mean, essentially, it's nearly identical front to back, except for instead of brick, you have the metal. It's a very symmetrical design. The applicant and staff have been working together on this since September to try to find a solution, and we were challenged also to give feedback about where exactly the brick should be located or the percentage of brick. So, that's why we've instead, so we didn't paint the applicant into a corner, allowed the flexibility in just saying we would like to see additional brick on the sides and the rear to make the four sides more compatible.
And I guess, just an extension of the question, adding, and as the applicant has said, adding some but not all seems problematic to me unless I could see it visually in a way that it made sense. So, it's kind of hard to see a partial solution.
All right. Commissioner Lukey Pierre?
Yeah, Shannon, can you maybe discuss what brought about the change from, in the plan that we looked at before? The first story was kind of like a plinth to the upper story. So, what brought about the change? I think that maybe part of the conundrum is that it reads now so, the four sides are so uniform that it, I think that that's where we're having trouble going, wow, it's all the, you know, brick on one side, and then the quality on the one side and the, you know, kind of secondary materials on the other, whereas before, there seemed to be a hierarchy of materials on even each facade. What necessitated or brought about that change?
That would be a question for the applicant.
Okay, then I would ask that question of the applicant.
All right, yes, and you can answer that question.
Okay. You're testing my memory a little bit on this one, because it goes back, it does go back a ways. I think some of it was to, was the original design putting it kind of up on a plinth, was really trying to push it to a little bit more of a contemporary version, and I think as we were looking at it, it was going to go more and more contemporary. And in discussion with the owner and just kind of looking at the site, it didn't really feel like it should be that contemporary of a building on that side. And so, that's why we kind of wanted to tone it back down, ground the base into the site and still break it up into two and not set it up on the plinth, because that felt a little bit out of place. So, I would say a little bit of this is coming back and saying, you know, is this really what we're doing, and thinking it maybe wasn't quite the right solution. That's probably the best answer I can give.
Sure. And then perhaps Pete, since you're, sorry, so I'm looking at the context photos of adjacent buildings, and aside from one, others seem to have, you know, horizontal banding of some sort that seemed to break it up, the massing up a little bit, whereas this new facade seems a little bit like really solid and there, and, you know, meeting the ground uniformly across the facade. I mean, I guess maybe I should ask, like, and the brick reinforces that because it's such a solid, you know, it says mass, you know, to it. So, I mean, I guess, is there a way, I mean, can you tell us what other ideas we've explored to maybe incorporate some of those elements on the other facades? Or, I mean, it seems like solid, and then it's like, you know, it's like a suburban house where the front has brick and then the side has a siding.
Yeah, you know, I think at this point, I think from the ownership's perspective, it's metal or it's brick, and aside from trying to get into doing design changes, it's metal or it's brick, and so we're asking for brick. And if that's not the case, then I think we go back to the metal.
Thank you.
Are there any further questions, or would someone like to make a motion? Commissioner Slack?
I'll make a motion to approve staff recommendation for item A, site plan review for 24-unit multifamily residential building with the four listed conditions.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve staff recommendation. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Bender?
Thank you, I'm supportive of this change. I just wanted to note, you know, that perhaps it was appropriate, but in order to make this material change, this applicant had to come back through the approval process of the planning commission, and I just wonder, you know, if that made sense or not. I mean, I know that we are looking to control the amount of materials that buildings have, and it's certainly a part of our site plan review, but in this case, the developer was choosing to use a more expensive, higher-quality material, and maybe we don't want to discourage that by making it too hard. So, just a thought about process for future consideration.
All right, Commissioner Rockwell.
So could I ask the applicant one other question, given this? Is, if we go forward with this motion, which means brick on all four sides, not brick on one side, right?
Metal.
What's that? Metal on all four sides.
Yeah, and maybe, maybe we can clarify, maybe Shannon, you'd be best.
Sorry. Let's clarify what we're talking about. This is why I'm asking.
Yeah, and maybe it'd be good just to clarify what, because basically, this is a request for additional alternative compliance.
Exactly.
And the recommendation is not to grant the alternative compliance. Maybe you can just elaborate on that a little bit.
So staff is able to make adjustments for minor changes, and you can see that with the proposed, what was approved by the council versus what is before you today and what is permitted. What we can't do is authorize alternative compliance, only the planning commission can do that, and unfortunately, this was the path that we had to take in order to get to this point, because the applicant really wants to use brick on the front facade, having it be more expensive material. Procedurally, they have a permit at hand, and that permit shows metal on the four sides as the primary exterior material. So you'll see cement, metal, cement, metal, cement, and identical on the rear elevation, and then cement, cement, metal, and then same on the north and south. So by approving the staff recommendation today, if the applicant decides to provide brick as an exterior material, they would have to increase the percentages. Alternatively, we would go back to the original approvals of last summer where these materials that were proposed and they've received a permit for already would be allowed.
Right, so I think, I mean, I think I was actually correct in what I was thinking. So if we approve this, and the applicant wishes to go forward with brick, then with the staff recommended condition, that brick would not only be on the front facade, the applicant is asking to just put brick on the front facade, correct?
Yes, there's a minimal amount of brick, I'm sorry, about 3% on the sides and rear.
Right, but what staff is recommending is that if the brick goes on the front, the brick also goes on the side and rear elevations.
Yeah, on a higher percentage as well.
Right, to match the front, essentially.
I dare not say match the front, because that's a percentage requirement, and I think we all agree that that might be a little excessive. So, the standard is that all four sides be compatible.
Right.
And so, with this design, it was difficult for staff to imagine how to directly applicant that wasn't a significant amount more of brick without it looking unbalanced or inappropriate.
Right, so this comes back to my original question for the applicant, which is if, so you obviously can afford to do what you're proposing, which is put brick on the front only.
Right.
And metal on the sides and the rear. But with this condition, are you able to put brick on the sides and rear? Or if we approve with this condition, are you going to say, we can't afford that, we're going metal?
I would say it's metal, that's the latter. So, it's either brick on the front and metal on the sides, or it's all metal.
Okay, that's what I was asking.
Commissioner Bender?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and so we couldn't, so help me understand what the definition of having, what amount of brick would be acceptable on the other facades if we don't have a percentage we're recommending?
We don't have a percentage we're recommending. We've only said that they should increase it so that they, the four sides appear to be compatible. When you're comparing 47% brick on the front facade, 3% on the sides, and zero on the rear, it's not, it's unbalanced. So something that moves us more towards a more balanced relationship of the exterior materials.
Commissioner Rockwell?
I think what, how I'm interpreting what we're looking at practically is that we're, if we approve with conditions, we are denying, practically speaking, we're denying the application because it ain't going to happen.
You're certainly denying the request for alternative compliance.
Yes, okay.
Commissioner Rieland?
I'll speak up for more bricks, so I'll be voting against the motion.
And I'll just clarify, again, the motion was to approve the staff recommendation, which is basically to not grant the alternative compliance request to have, you know, a very high percentage of brick on the front and a very low percentage of brick on the sides. Commissioner Bender?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I appreciate the conversation because I was obviously confused about what the staff recommendation was saying, and so I also, I think it would really be a shame to not allow the brick on one side. I personally don't have a problem with the proposal. There are a lot of buildings in my ward, which is very close by this area, that have the sort of rhythm of a, of a one side being a different material than the rest of the building. And so, I wondered if folks who don't feel okay with this proposal, if there are suggestions of things that are in between, I mean, getting just a metal panel building or this, otherwise I also wouldn't be supporting this motion.
Commissioner Luppi Pier?
I guess I'm kind of seeing both too. I mean, I think brick's definitely more quality material, and I'd like to encourage more of that than just metal panel. At the same time, I have a serious problem with the front of the building getting treated like a gem, and the sides and back getting treated like garbage, because that kind of sets a bad tone for the rest of the city. Not that metal panels garbage, but just in general, the precedent that's for making the front awesome and the sides wah-wah, is not what I want to encourage as an architect. It's just, it goes against everything I stand for. So, one thing though, that does strike me is perhaps that's maybe the reason why it's not sitting well with me just visually, is that on the front, you can see that there would be an interesting shadow line, and something created by the fact that the brick projects from the metal, and it kind of creates an interesting, you know, where those materials meet, but on the sides, it's almost, it reads as flat and fake, because it is just one material into another that gives no depth, and therefore, it doesn't really justify why the middle is different at all. I mean, why not just, ugh, have it be the same? I mean, I wish that the center parts on the sides and back would either project out or step back, you know, at least a foot or something to create a reason for it being different. Because then I would say, well, maybe then that those sides are being treated in a compatible manner just by the fact that they're projecting or pulling inwards, just like how the front facade is projecting outward or pulling in, you know, they could pick up the same characteristics of the facade, not necessarily the same materiality, and that would allow them to have an enhanced material on the front, but it would keep the same, or similar vocabulary on the sides and back. You know, if they're not, if it's going brick somewhere, they can't find a way to make it work where it doesn't just look like they threw brick in a part of it. I think that that kind of might be a good compromise, you know, I mean, it might mean more time drawing, changing construction documents, but I think it would be a worthwhile one, because it would actually make it compatible in a form, if not, because it won't be compatible on materials.
Commissioner Slack?
Well, my read on the motion is that, based on the testimony and the questions and the responses to the specific questions asked by commission members, is that it's an all or nothing thing, so it's going to be all metal or it's going to be partially brick. And unfortunately, I, showing up the previous image of what was previously approved, it felt like it had better massing on the site to me, whereas this is with all the brick on the front facades, it's a little bit more monolithic, the way I view it. And so, my hope with this motion and approval of staff recommendation is that maybe the applicant will go back, work with staff, and maybe reduce the quantity of brick on the front, and maybe try to reapply that to at least two sides, if not the three other sides, but maybe that's not going to happen, and that's my reason for making the motion.
Commissioner Luppi Pier?
I'm sorry, I guess I wanted to possibly propose a condition, a fifth one under the proposed motion. If that doesn't work, where they go back and can revisit a way to make all the sides materialistic, you know, compatible for material palette, that they, compatibility in this instance could be allowed by alternating, or altering the projection of the central portions of the remaining three facades to pick up the same form or, you know, pretense of as the front, and that's something they could explore with staff. And I think, Pete, you know, I say that, do you know what I'm saying? What I'm saying? Yeah, he gets it, okay. So that would be a condition I would like to add, that way they have the option of either finding a solution with materials or finding a solution with form to be compatible, and then they could still use brick. Win-win.
All right, we should, we should probably vote on adding that condition. So, we have a motion, is there, we have a motion and a second. And that condition, maybe Commissioner Luppi Pier, you can correct me if I'm not stating this well, but Commissioner Luppi Pier, do you wish?
Sure, question the applicant, what do you think?
The footings are poured in place.
Oh, well, that, could you have it kindly brought out?
Potentially.
At least maybe second floor and up?
Other than the wall panels are in production, everything's in production, so in reality, that would also, if it's an either-or, you can certainly, I mean, obviously, you can certainly do whatever.
It isn't either-or, it is not a, it's not a mandate.
It is, but I can tell you, it goes back to the statement from before, is it's, you know, it's probably not happening, so.
Well then, if it won't happen, I should probably just withdraw the motion, although it wasn't either-or.
Okay, so that motion is withdrawn. So, going back to our original motion to approve the application for site plan review, is there any further discussion on that motion? If there is none, quick, please call and roll.
Rieland?
No.
Sweetsie?
Aye.
Slack?
Aye.
Rockwell?
No.
Luppi Pier?
Aye.
Gagnon?
No.
Bender?
No.
That was no?
No.
And Rieland, what was your vote?
No.
No? So that is four noes and three yeses.
All right, so that motion fails. Would someone like to make an alternate motion? Or, I guess, if not, I assume, Mr. Wittenberg, we would need a motion to deny, so Commissioner Rockwell? Yeah, we, yeah, Commissioner Rockwell, would you like to make an alternative motion? It would not necessarily have to be to deny, but to at least alter the conditions.
I think I would make a motion to approve the application for site plan review, including the application, including alternative compliance to allow brick on the front facade.
All right, we have a motion and a second, and maybe, so I assume that would mean we would be striking condition number two as stated in the agenda and.
Correct.
And replacing it with a condition that would possibly state that brick on the front facade would be acceptable.
Right.
All right, so as, as the application has submitted, so, okay, so we have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion on that motion? Oh, I understand that Commissioner Kronzer has arrived. So, to get him to up to speed, we now have a second motion on the table to approve the site plan review. We've struck condition number two and replaced it with a condition stating that the brick is acceptable on the front facade.
Right, approving alternative compliance as requested in this site plan review.
All right, is there any further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, clerk, please call and roll.
Bender?
Aye.
Gagnon?
Aye.
Kronzer?
I want to abstain since I just arrived.
Luppi Pier?
No.
Rockwell?
Aye.
Slack?
No.
Sweetsie?
No.
Rieland?
Aye.
So that is four yeses, three noes, and one abstention.
All right, and that motion carries. And that concludes our discussion on item three, that also concludes our business for today. We have committee of the whole on Thursday, and our next meeting is May 23rd, and we are adjourned.